I have a gap, too, so I can start with a gap.
Yes, you did.
We're good.
Good. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of August 16th, 2021 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 13th, 2021, according to public law, 1975, Chapter 231. Welcome to the public for our second meeting here in the council chambers. Nice to see everyone this evening. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Farkas?
Here.
Councilman Legati?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
Councilman Zambrana?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a moment of silence, followed by a salute to the flag. Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation from the Historical Society, so I will turn it over to Mr. David Ornheim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Borough Council. Thank you for having me here. Okay, so, as we're all aware, the South Main Street Firehouse has been more or less decommissioned. And since we, since that time, even since before that time, a lot of people have been pondering what's going to happen. And a lot of people don't want to see it sold or torn down. And as a member of the Historical Society, we've been looking at different ways that it could be used. And we feel that the best way would be to give it to the Historical Society for...
We can't hear you. That's enough.
All right. Thank you, Russ. So we're hoping that you would be kind enough to allow us to add it to the museum. So let's go through the presentation, and I'll hopefully explain why. The future Milltown's South Main Street Firehouse property, creating a hub of community pride and downtown activity with Milltown Historical Society and Milltown History Museum. Excellent. So as many of you know, whether you lived here forever or whether you're a transplant, you know that there's so many firsts that are embodied in that building. It was the first public school, that was its first use, the first public school in Milltown. After that, it was the first Borough Hall, the first Police Department, the first courthouse, Milltown's first firehouse, the first meeting place for the rescue squad, and the first meeting place of even the Board of Education. So one of the proposed uses of the former South Main Street Firehouse by Milltown Historical Society, and this is based on input from residents and our own members, from online and in person. Some of the suggested uses are, next slide. A creation of the Milltown Historical Village. Now, the former firehouse, we would like to rename the Hometown Unity Building, because it's really, it's not just a firehouse anymore. Now, it's the center of where everything happened, the hub of everything. So that would mean that the barn, the garage, the firefighter's monument, wall of honor, and property that's part of the firehouse property would be added to the Historical Society museum lease. We would have a permanent placement of the historical easement or deed restriction on the hub, which is in process by the Historic Preservation Committee and Randy Ruth. But that can take up to two years sometimes because of all the ins and outs and lawyer speak that has to go into that. We hope to preserve and protect the building from destruction in the event that it's not added to the historical lease through that deed restriction or historic easement. We would have new signage near Main Street designated the area as the Milltown Historical Village. All building maintenance and repairs will be the sole responsibility of the Milltown Historical Society, including all associated costs, just as the current lease has it for the Milltown Museum as it is right now. And a placement on the state and national registers of historic landmarks, which is also in progress with the Historic Preservation Committee. Next slide.
Excuse me.
So some of the uses for the hub, the Hometown Unity Building after the rehab. The former Engine Bay, Engine Bays would be turned into rotating seasonal displays. And we would have traveling exhibits from other museums coming in to be on display and attracting people to town. We would have special exhibits commemorating various historical events or different history months. On, that's Engine Base 62, yeah, I'm still trying to see which ones which. The Milltown Veterans Honor Hall would be in the back half of Engine Base 62. We would have flags from all the services, as well as pictures of the known military veterans. We work with the VFW and American Legion on getting that information and keeping it up to date. We'd have pictures and bios, short bios of Milltown residents who are currently serving in the military. And we'd have a gold star wall for the Milltonians who have lost their lives while serving in the military. Engine Base 63, which is the newer addition on the right-hand side, if you're looking at the firehouse, would be our community arts hall, since that's another big open place with the bathrooms in the back. That would be a good little setting for concerts or local musicians and groups to perform. It would be a rotating art gallery throughout the year. And we would have other displays and maybe even little mini conventions. It would be a space for local artists, musicians, and writers, and so many other talented people to exchange ideas and display and perform for each other and the public. It could also be a rental hall for small parties and gatherings, which would help pay for the ongoing restoration to the building. And the back room of Bay 63, which is behind the bathrooms, we would use that as a possible Evans-Forny House. Who was the first mayor of Milltown? Our artifact display, because all of that is currently packed in the basement of the Annex Building. And that's, it's sad seeing it down there and not having room to display it right now. And, oh, and we would also have the bathrooms in Engine Base 63, which would be ADA, upgraded and ADA compliant. Continue. The former barn kitchen area, which is the middle part where you take the stairs up, we would have that be the little museum village general store for little snacks and memorabilia, custom Milltown items for souvenirs and stuff. The kitchen, we would keep that and maybe offer that as a part of the rentals with the Engine Base 63. And we would have all inspections as required. The second floor would have to be closed to the public until we were able to get an ADA compliant elevator to go to the second floor. But when we did get the funds and get the elevator installed, we hope to make that a multimedia center to preserve and display so much of the various paper artifacts. We have maps dating back to the late 1800s and early 1900s showing the various little villages of the future, back then, future blueprints of town. And even blueprints of some of the old houses, we have the Forny Evans House blueprint, which is very interesting. And as well as having maps showing the development of Milltown throughout the years. There's aerial images from the 1930s on to present time. And it's interesting seeing the evolution of Milltown throughout the years. We'd like to have that on display. And we would have that area to display digital, the digital history of Milltown as well. Scanning and preserving the paper history, putting it into digital format, having like a smart TV like we do in the Borough School, something like that. And the office space would just be used for confidential important documents and the main place for internet access and main computers to, you know, offer Wi-Fi. Next slide. The upbuilding uses, the barn would become the home of what we're calling the Milltown Architectural Salvage and Education Center, which would be a workspace for local architectural salvage, to be stored, repaired, and/or sold to residents by volunteers. We would hope to be able to go to houses that haven't been able to be saved and before they're torn down, to maybe save some of the architectural details from them, whether it's old banisters or old posts, and bring them to the historical salvage place and either restore them and show people how to restore them and care for them properly throughout town, or offer them up to sale to help raise funds to continue to fund the hub. It would also be an education center to host the workshops also, as Randy's been doing on his house, showing bricks, how to redo bricks and how to do windows and stuff. And the garage would be for storage for equipment and stuff, because we do hope to eventually not rely on the borough for grounds maintenance. If we got the firehouse and the outbuildings, then we'd be able to keep the grounds tidy ourselves. Next slide. And expanded uses for the grounds, this is for all the community. We could offer to have a community garden there, because we have a big parking lot and access to water, so it just seems like it's a good site for the community garden. We would offer community movie nights, which a lot of people have been asking for, I've seen anyway. And various little markets, whether it's farmers' markets once or twice a month, or antique and flea markets annually, holiday markets. I was stationed in Germany for a few years, and something that the little towns had, they had big markets in the middle of town. And it was just, it was great. It was awesome seeing them and having people converse there and buy little trinkets and everything, so. And food trucks, yeah. Everything, food trucks for all of them. Food trucks are fun. Go ahead, next slide. The repairs and costs, these are estimates just based on a recent walkthrough of the building. This is, you know, it's not hard numbers yet, but we would have to have a full walkthrough with an inspector to get the actual cost. Then the main part would be the roof and the siding, because we want to get the outside finished before working on the inside. The repairs on the Engine Base 63 roof, which I know has leaked and it caused some of the tiles to fall down, that would be like the primary, the first thing we would want to get done is that one. Updating bathrooms, new lighting, electric flooring, eventually replacing the garage doors and getting that elevator. Those are the big ones. Some of the phases and time frame of the hub. Phase one, like I said, we would do a cleanup of the property. And we would really get into the roof inspection and repair, including the poly application to save time and money. New signage denoting the Milltown Historical Village and a plaque commemorating it as a gift from the borough of Milltown. We would begin this as soon as any transfer of the property to us happened. Phase two would be mainly exterior and then the interior first floor and wall floor, floor and wall and floor paint, tongue tie, where, you know, major improvements aren't necessary. We would do exterior pillar paint, the big white pillars on that side, window and door trim, bathroom work inspections on the electric and plumbing. That would happen throughout, well, most of this year and next year. Phase three, the exterior siding repainting, the original wood scallop, which is above, if you drive by today, you'll see that the siding is falling off, and you'll see the original scallop. That's very beautiful. We would restore and repaint that. That would happen tentatively autumn of 2023. And phase four is the reopening of the first floor while working on the restoring of the staircase of the original Borough Hall and the new post and the banisters, railings, and repairing the upstairs rooms. And that would be through 2023. Next slide. The long term is obviously the main, the big thing we want to do eventually is get that elevator and open up that second floor. We would like to possibly even rebuild the school bell tower, cupola, that was up in the middle of the roof up top. Replacement of the bay doors, 63s with the early 20th century, late 19th century storefront style facade. And Bay 62 with the fake, the faux swing open doors like what it originally had. And the removal of the driveway going up to the bays and the landscaping in its place, and privacy fence and landscaping along the backyard fence. Next slide. And, yeah, that's my presentation. And just a few numbers. I know Randy Ruth, for his presentation, he said that for every dollar spent investing in museums, eight dollars is returned to the local economy. And that was with historic preservation specifically. For museums, it's, for every dollar invested, it's five dollars is brought back to the local economy. So just a little something to keep in mind. And I know we all want Milltown to be a walkable downtown, but a walkable downtown without having some kind of attraction, it's kind of hard to have. So we hope to be that attraction by improving the property and adding the, what we hope to be called the hub, to the Milltown Historical Society's museum.
Thank you. Very nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
No questions, but Dave, I'm just going to say thank you very much for the presentation. It looks like there was a lot of work, consideration, and time put into it by you and your committee. I think I speak for all the council that will take it under consideration.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate you and your team doing all of this for us.
Thank you, Councilman.
Now, that being said, I would also like to inform the Milltown residents that we are moving forward with the original plan that was set forth for those two buildings in that we are obtaining appraisals for those two properties. In the original plan, it was to recoup some of the costs for the Public Works and Firehouse, the new buildings that were there. So not to hide anything or not to let nobody know.
I understand.
We are moving forward with that aspect as well. Doesn't mean that, you know, we're not going to take this into consideration, which we will, but I wanted the public and the residents to know the original plan was to recoup some of the costs for the Milltown residents, and we are moving forward with that. We're in the process of getting appraisals.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So I just have a quick question. Why?
Absolutely.
Why now? Why not when we, the new fire department was originally proposed? Why did you wait this?
I think there was always a hope that there would be something, but, and also organization.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so a little bit of...
And this is for the Historical Society.
Correct.
And how many members do you have now?
Oh, we have a dozen members right now.
Good, great. No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yes.
When you said other residents input, because I understand the Historical Society helped put in, what was the process that you guys used? Was it a survey or like interviews? Like, how did you get the other residents' input on this?
Oh, just talking to people and running into them.
I didn't know if it was like a survey, and like I was going to ask if it was a survey, like the sample size and...
We've had a couple surveys for different purposes.
Yeah, I don't remember that survey. I don't...
I was just curious. I'm sorry.
That was, yeah, the preservation in general, but, yeah, and chats online.
Now, Dave, it's not very easy doing some public speaking, and you did a very good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from July 19th, 2021. May I have a motion?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Tackled. I have a motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, I will ask all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, the bill lists, we will go on to bills and claims. Will the clerk please read by title only, the Bill Resolution 193-2021?
Resolution 193-2021 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the borough of Milltown in the total amount of $5,181,399.06.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Peretti. Will the clerk please call, oh, any comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience on consent agenda resolutions 194-2021 through 207, 2021. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please step to the microphone, identify yourself to the clerk, and say your name and address for the record. The comments are limited to resolutions listed on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, I will close audience comments, and we'll introduce the resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions, or does anyone want to pull any resolutions from the consent agenda? Okay, there being no requests, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting. And whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted. Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Zambrana. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to ordinance introductions. There will be no public input on the introduction of ordinance twenty-one dash one five zero two. The introduction summary will be published in the Home News Tribune on eight twenty twenty twenty-one and second reading, public hearing and final adoption will be considered on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight AM and four thirty PM Monday through Thursday and Friday, eight AM to noon. Twenty-five dash one five zero two, an ordinance to amend chapter thirty-four, comprehensive development of revised general ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, to define smoke shops and vape shop, to prohibit smoke shops and vape shops in all residential districts, the B-one, B-two, B-two A and B-three commercial districts, all industrial districts, the residential senior citizen housing zone and the community service zone, and to permit smoke shops and vape shops in the B-four highway strip commercial zone and B-five highway strip commercial zone within the Borough of Milltown. May I have a a motion?
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law and a public hearing be held at our our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, September thirteenth at seven PM in council chambers in Borough Hall.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Council President Farkas. Any comments or discussion from the council? Seeing none, may we have a roll call?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce.
Thank you. Uh, next we have um the second ordinance. There will be no public input on the introduction of ordinance twenty-one dash fifteen oh three. The introduction summary will be published in the Home News Tribune on August twentieth, twenty twenty-one and second reading, public hearing and final adoption will be considered on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight AM and four thirty PM Monday through Thursday and Friday, eight AM to noon. Twenty-one dash one five zero three, an ordinance of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending chapter eight of the Borough Code of the Borough of Milltown entitled School Age Child Care Program. May I have a motion to introduce twenty-one fifteen oh three?
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, September thirteenth at seven PM in council chambers in Borough Hall.
Second.
Have motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Councilwoman Peretti. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the reports. We'll start with the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Councilman Phil Zambrano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I don't have a finance administration planning um report tonight, uh, but for the revitalization committee, I'd like to welcome Marion Bunny J. Scoot and Andrea Van Devere um for filling out citizen leadership application forms to join the Milltown Revitalization Committee. Um, we'll be in touch um with details on where we are um via email and provide the Zoom link for our next meeting. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Legati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of reports tonight from the Milltown Police Department, Chief Brian Cenelli. Between July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one and August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, police have responded to one thousand eleven calls for service during this period. Police conducted one hundred and one, I'm sorry, one hundred and eleven radar details in numerous locations. Police made a hundred and seventy-six motive vehicle stops. Five criminal arrests were made during this period, which include domestic violence and weapons charges. Police responded to ten motive vehicle accidents, which involved only minor injuries. The Milltown Police Department remains in compliance with all mandated training, testing and directives set forth by the State of New Jersey Attorney General's Office and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Parents and guardians of school-aged childrens are reminded that, beginning September one, twenty twenty-one, there will no longer be a crossing guard at Van Leeuve Avenue and North Main Street. And anyone needing to cross Main Street should utilize the guarded crosswalk at Church Street. Parents and guardians are encouraged to familiarize their children with the walkway routes. Milltown Police will have officers present at Van Leeuve Avenue and Main Street from September one through September tenth during school days to assist and educate children on safe routes and safe crossings to schools. As school returns and localized school traffic increases, residents are reminded to please obey all state and local traffic laws. Drive safely. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns and non-emergent type calls to seven three two, eight two eight, one one zero zero. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use nine one one. Residents are reminded to report any concerns and or complaints by using the official Borough website or by calling the police directly. Milltown Police Department does not monitor and will not react, reply or respond to comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. Please stay, please, please stay safe and thank you, Chief Brian Cenelli. My next report is from the Milltown Fire Department, monthly report for July twenty twenty-one. Drills two, meetings one, fire calls sixteen, special assignments seven, work details four, total incidents thirty. General information, maintenance and testing is ongoing as described below. Chief Cenelli and Ralph Jeznowski have been very helpful, which is appreciated. Membership, the fire department is working on reinstating a junior firefighter program that was that was in place fifteen years ago. This is another tool to boost future membership. One member is quarantined due to positive COVID test. He is recovering at home. Training, two department drills were conducted, radio updates and walkthrough of the new Public Works Building for pre-planning purposes. Vehicle maintenance, car eighty-one and car eighty-two had peeling, striping replaced and windows tinted to prevent gear fading. Car eighty-one had air conditioning recharged. Pump testing is scheduled as well as preventative maintenance and non-destructive aerial test for ladder seventy-three. Engine seventy-two was taken out of service due to an engine issue and leaking pumping. Repairs are scheduled. Equipment maintenance, hose testing was done by Reliant Services. Ten lengths of holes failed due to leaking couplings or holes in the hose itself. Spare hose will be used and new lengths ordered. The chiefs met with representatives from firefighter one to discuss turnout gear purchasing over the next few years in order to chip away at replacing members' gear, something that will be due in three years. Announcements for council, uh, announcements, members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the Firehouse Monday nights at six thirty PM or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. Respectfully submitted, Chief Steven Battalion, Milltown Fire Department. My next report is a very quick report. Um, I attended the senior center luncheon for a welcome back, uh, was very well attended. Uh, all programs are starting to get operating uh on a as-needed basis as we go forward and and as membership increases. Please contact Debbie Cuddy if have any questions or concerns going forward. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, next we have the Department of Utilities, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, unfortunately, an electric department report was not submitted tonight, so I only have the water sewer report. Along with all markouts, rereads and daily work orders, the Water Sewer Department has the following report. Water meter replacement is ongoing as manpower allows. The water leak at North Main and Pardon Avenue have been, has been repaired. The leak on Clay Street has been fixed and the road patch replaced. The department is still waiting for parts to arrive to repair the muffin monster and pump three at Church Street station. All lead notices have been posted or mailed as per DEP requirements. Bi-weekly water testing is ongoing and daily water samples of Elkins Lane continues. Department training at stations continues. Sewer machine training is also taking place. Scheduling is beginning for hydro flushing, excuse me, in October. Notices will go out prior to uh the start of that flushing. And as always, please check channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for water sewer updates. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, thank you. Along with all curbside collection, DPW has the following report. Road repair has taken place on Pershing Avenue, Albert Avenue and Riva Avenue. Trees were removed on One D Way, Peachwood Court to Bonus Drive and two on Cleveland Avenue. Tree pruning has taken place on One D Way, Rosewood, Washington Ave and Northbrook to clear sidewalks of low-hanging branches. More safety material has been spread at Michelin Field Playground and Joffrey Playground. Catch basin repair and rebuild took place on Violet Terrace. Two concrete repairs have taken place on Clay Street. All fire hydrants on for, en route to, which is Ford Avenue and Lawrence, have been painted or touched up and will now move to, they will now move to another section in town. Line painting is taking place and ongoing as manpower permits. Quarterly concrete collection has been completed. The next collection will begin on October eleventh. Please plan your projects with this in mind. Additional reminders, please note that metal is to be collected on the first Wednesday of each month. TVs and electronics are to be collected on the second Wednesday of each month. Bulk non-metal will be collected on the third, third Wednesday of each month. Please put items out no sooner than Tuesday before each collection. Pickup may take until Friday. Please check channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for any more DPW updates. And in addition to the DPW report tonight, I also have a small update from the Green Team. We just have a couple of things going on I wanted to highlight. First comes, uh, we are currently working on in the Green Team, the members are working on putting together both education on recycling, the do's and don'ts of recycling, as well as water conservation. Um, all of these actions that they do go towards their sustainable jersey application that they have to resubmit for every couple of years. The second thing is that the Green Team will be down at Milltown Day, so if anyone, any residents would like to come and learn more or come to learn about some of our ongoing projects, please stop by our table. And a a big update with the pollinator garden down at Mill Pond. Um, everyone in the Green Team has been helping out to work on there. And in addition to everyone on the Green Team, the DPW has helped out by clearing some grapevine using some of their bigger heavy-duty machines and also they are bringing back a machine to come and re, uh, what's it called? Regrade, to make the area flat. In addition to that, Mike's Country Market has generously donated some mulch to the pollinator garden, so thank you for that. And if you are interested in helping out and tuning up the pollinator garden, reach out to me. We don't have any set dates just yet, but as soon as we do, you know, we'll let everyone know. And that is all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Just want to start by apologizing to the resident who may not have been able to hear me. I've moved my microphone a lot closer for this meeting, so I hope that's a lot better. Um, I did go from having a headset that I wore for all my previous meetings to to this, so there's some adjustments were required. The Environmental Commission met on July twenty-eighth. Um, Mayor Mayor was in attendance, as was Ralph from the DPW. And there was an active discussion involving um the future plans for the Schwendeman Estate. Um, those discussions will be on, ongoing. We're continuing to work on the stormwater ordinance and invasive species potential ordinance. The members of the Environmental Commission are very excited about Milltown Day and much like the Green Team, we're discussing many plans to share, um, you know, really important information with the residents and everyone hopes that people will attend Milltown Day to get a chance to meet them in person. But they can also participate, participate in our meetings um on the fourth Tuesdays, I'm sorry, fourth Wednesdays of each month. They are considering changing the meeting cadence to better align with the planning board's um meeting date change, um, but that may require some more extensive work because as a commission, we may have um things written into our bylaws and things that other committees uh don't. So we'll be looking into that further and watch for further updates from us on that. The Library Board took August off, um, but they will decide this month about future meetings being in-person or online for the remainder of twenty twenty-one, so we'll keep in touch about that. And the Board of Health also did not um have a necessity to meet in August. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Margaret. You can, I guess you could talk to the clerk about the meeting schedule time, especially as we go forward, making the calendar for next year if there's gonna be a change, right, Mimi?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yes, thank you.
And next we'll have the Department of Recreation, Councilwoman James Perez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Registration for the Parkview SAC twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year opened last week. If you have any questions about um remaining spots, please contact the department directly. Albert Avenue Summer Recreation Camp concluded on Friday, August thirteenth. It was a very fun and successful season. The Borough Pool will end the season with the Labor Day festivities on Monday, September sixth, um, which always is a big event, so I encourage um as many people as possible head down there. It's a very fun day. Um, the last session for swim lessons began today at the Milltown Borough Pool and will end on August twenty-seventh. Please stop by the pool or the recreation office if you would still like to register. That is the last um lessons for this uh summer. So again, if you want um any makeup lessons or uh lessons before taking a long break until next season, make sure you get signed up promptly. Also want to give a shout out to both our summer programs, the Albert Avenue Recreation Camp and the Borough Pool, um, all the s- uh, young workers, all the adult workers, um, all the families that made those um two programs possible this summer despite a lot of setbacks leading up to the season. Um, it was really, really great to get those programs back and running. I know a lot of residents were missing those, so very happy that those were able to um run smoothly this year, so big thank you to them. And now turning the page, we're looking forward to fall programs and our youth fall soccer registration is now open. You can register, I'll read the website out, it's www dot register dot capturepoint dot com slash Borough of Milltown. The fall tennis, yoga, men's basketball and volleyball registration will be opening by the end of the week. You can also register at the same website, one more time, is www dot register dot capturepoint dot com slash Borough of Milltown. Please remember, if you are interested in renting any of our beautiful Milltown parks, please contact the Recreation Department directly to acquire a park facility usage form. And finally, please note that we are still accepting non-perishable food, food donations for our Milltown neighbors in need, as well as the Middlesex County Food Bank, which supports our Milltown residents. You may drop items off at Borough Hall and place them in the green. and place them in the green bins in the hallway of the main entrance during normal business hours. Please remember, bags are optional to enter the building. Please do not leave food in the police entrance vestibule. And that concludes the recreation report. Very quickly, for our Milltown Historical Preservation Committee, I want to thank Dave for his presentation today. I know the Historical Preservation Committee worked a lot on that presentation with the Historical Society, so thank you for, again, that's definitely not easy for making presentations like that. And thank you for that very detail for us to look over for the council members. The Human Relations Committee, we are changing our September month meeting. Originally, the first Tuesday in the month coincides with Rosh Hashanah, so now our meeting will be September 9. It has been updated on the Milltown website. Just a reminder to everyone. And we would also welcome a new member to the Human Relations Committee, Winter Shrek. So thank you for joining the Human Relations Committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to the Administrator Report. Jeanette Larsson.
I have no report tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Our Engineer Report, Mr. Mike Muspel.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We are pleased to present tonight the plans and specifications for the work on Chestnut Street. And as you know, you received word a few weeks ago that the money was available, and your administrator requested we expedite the plan preparation. We haven't tonight. Have requested authorization to advertise. The budget, as you may remember, was $645,000. Unfortunately, prices have gone a little out of control because of the supply chain and the things with the pandemic. But what we've done and what was originally planned was to include the leash knives in the project so that the project could be deleted, so that whatever we could fund, we can fund and finance and then come back and later program. So hopefully, you're in a position to authorize to advertise tonight, and we will present those plans to your Borough Clerk and have a date for bids. And hopefully, by your next meeting on the 13th, we're in a position to recommend a work so something can be done before the winter months.
Great. So we can do a voice vote to go ahead and advertise, right?
Yeah, that would be fine, just to accept the specs and plans and then we will set the date to advertise.
Okay, so all in favor of moving ahead and advertising?
Aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, good side.
Thank you, so I'll have to.
Mike, can you just tell us what that would mean, what the Chestnut Street project would mean to the residents?
Well, there's been a longtime problem over there with regard to supply, not necessarily continued supply, but supply during high demands. And by these improvements in the ones that will be done, no matter whether there's, you know, whatever the money is, we'll be replacing a six-inch main, which is at times difficult to get water at heavy time periods and peak periods through it. So that'll be done. And then there's a loop up at the end, the Highland, which appears to be never installed, and the water system operators have requested that we include that loop. So those two pieces would be done, and then the rest would be cleaning and lining the remaining six-inch water lines in there. So the idea would be to get two eight-inch lines in to replace the one side, put a new piece in the other, and then clean and line what's left over.
Great.
The prices come in competitive. That's right, yep. Between Highland and Chestnut and Van Leeuve. Prices come in competitive, we'll be able to do the whole thing. That's one of them.
Great, thank you. And finally, we will move on to our Attorney Report. Mr. Peter Vinyol.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and to me, I don't have anything to report. I would just want to say I hope everyone is enjoying their summer. It's moving by quickly. I thank all the council members and all of the committee members. You know, it's even though we've only met once a month during the summer, all of these folks have been working hard throughout the summer as have all of our professionals and our employees, so we appreciate it. And actually, speaking of appreciation, we are going to have an employee appreciation picnic this Wednesday. So if you're driving through town and you see a party going on, it's for the employees of the Borough of Milltown. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone there. With that, I will turn it over to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business they wish to bring up this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Jeanette, any movement on that lightning strike detector for the pool?
So I had Recreation look into that, and they're looking at different avenues. I guess a conversation with the neighboring town that has a pool found that that detector wasn't necessarily as, I don't know what the word is, not the best option. So they're looking into, there's a subscription to another service that would identify, that is better, that they're using. So that's what we're looking into.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business they'd like to bring before this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to audience comments. The public portion, comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker has finished. It should further be noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. If a member has a specific question they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office during regular business hours or with a member of council. Please state your name for the record when you come to the podium. Does any member of the audience have any comments? Welcome back, nice to see you.
Yeah, good to see you all. Been a while.
Yes.
Uh, I'll start with Chestnut Street, since you just brought it up.
Name and address. Excuse me, sir, could you please give me your name and address for the record?
Lee Weisenberger, 99 JFK Drive.
We're out of practice.
Eight-inch mains?
That's correct.
And going to replace all the shut-off valves and everything on them?
Well, because of the cost, we may not do all the services. All depends on what the project budget will allow. Obviously, as you know, as we did up at your house, the best thing is to change the service at the curb stop. We may not be able to here, especially on a cleaning and lining project is not always done. So it's in the project, if we can afford it, we will.
Right, and along that line, when these projects are done, is the material mostly American, or is that a?
There's a requirement in all our bid specs that they're American-made products.
Okay, appreciate that.
And then, Lee, that's only if those products are available. At times, these products are made in Canada, but if there's no U.S. product, then generally, it's allowable to go to outside the country. But 99% of the time, it's U.S.-made products.
Okay. Pertaining to what's going on with Pershing, the reconstruction of those streets, even West Foch, whatnot, is that going to be water line pipe getting fixed again? Is that part of that? Or is the sewer line going to be replaced too? Or we don't know what we're up against there?
Here's what's happened. Hag and Bateen are currently listed for reconstruction. They're currently at DOT awaiting approval for bidding. The next portion of the project is to work on West Foch. As you know, the water line, West Foch, was lined sometime.
Hey.
The sad third sewer now is what we're looking at. Part of the project is to hopefully not replace the sad third sewer, but be able to reline it and rehabilitate it without removal because of cost. It will be done as part of the project.
Yep. I got a little gripe that goes back in time. Like I said, we did get our water line done. Ducon did it, okay? That was 2016. Is there a warranty to that?
With the project, there was a two-year guarantee.
It's a two-year, so that's a standard maintenance line. Okay. Because like I said, in 2020, we had a leak up there, and Montana came in and fixed it.
Okay.
And it turns out that Ducon, there was another water line up there to feed to my house, I had two feeds to the house. I never knew that.
Two services, yeah.
Two services. Because apparently, when the house was constructed or the lot was put in, they didn't know where the house would be. But Ducon just smashed that line flat, okay? And I thought that was just insane. That's what they're saying now, that's what Montana said. And it seems for the couple of seconds it would have taken just to put a pinhole in that line or whatever to find out if it was live, they didn't do it.
Yeah, Lee, I've heard about this, but I'll talk to Don Herman and find out what the difference is.
Well, like I said, Montana had to dig that up, and I don't know, I think the cost was $35,000 plus and put three holes in the street. And I think there's still something going on up there.
We'll talk to Don Herman if I can. It's the first time I hear him.
But move on to the New Jersey Turnpike Authority. We have a contact with them?
Not so much.
Not so much. Now, this is another one that goes back, my neighbor. We have, I have a drain in my yard, he has a drain in his yard. That drain in his yard has never worked. It's disconnected, it needs to be replaced, repaired. If we can send a letter to him and see what happens or contact somebody, because it just keeps washing out over there, and it's not a good situation. Back to West Foch, there's talk of PSENG replacing the gas lines? Possibly?
They are, they've been advised of our project, and they will be coordinated. So if there's any work to be done, whether it be done before our work is done.
Right, any talk of JFK gas lines?
Not that I know of.
Not at this time, okay? Appreciate it. Attorney Attorney, affordable housing?
Yes, sir.
Anything going on?
There's lots of things going on. So contentation is still proceeding.
It's still proceeding. Okay, I'm just trying to catch up.
There's a lot to catch up.
Lot of catching up, so, yeah. But that'll about cover for now, I guess. Appreciate it.
We'll be here next.
Winter Shrek, 73 South Street. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and especially thank you to Councilman Peretti for not only recognizing my appointment in the Human Relations Committee, but also recognizing the younger recreation members. I was also a staff member at Albert Avenue Camp. And, you know, we had our trial and tribulations, and there were some things here and there, but we got through it, and it feels really awesome to hear that we did a good job. So overall, that's it, thank you.
No, very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Wright, 38 Harrison Avenue. I just want to thank David for a good presentation and to you for listening and being such great listeners and receptive to his presentation. There's not much space in Milltown. We're, it's a public, on Main Street, where it's a public space that could be used by the community. And I think that keeping that space public is a great benefit. Like you mentioned a little bit there about the community garden. As I've looked at other places in town for a community garden,